Hello, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Muskogee Municipal Authority, February 24th, 2025. Could we stand up and have the invitation in place?
Yes.
Flag salute.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather that you've given us, dear Lord, today. Dear Lord, we just ask you to come before us tonight, dear Lord, and just give us the wisdom to do what is right for our city as we move forward this evening with our agenda items, and we ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oklahoma. Salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It symbols a peace, unity, and people. Thank you. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous, Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Okay, everybody's here. The regular agenda. Item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of January 27th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Okay. Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, February 24th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Okay. Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, February 24th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned. Oh, we got item number two, I'm sorry.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority claims for the period of January 18, 2025, through February 14, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Pardon me, Roger.
Chair, members of the RDA, before you are the claims for the month of, or for the period from January 18th of 2025 through February 14th, 2025. Ready to answer any questions you may have, and staff recommends approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. That meeting is adjourned. Now, we will call to order tonight's Muskogee City Council, February 24th, 2020-25. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hous.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
C.B. Abel.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 20, please.
Consider approval to award less lawn the following. A, base bid one in the amount of $15,800 per month. B, base bid three in the amount of $7,700 per month. C, base bid four in the amount of $4,900 per month. D, health department ditch in the amount of $600 per cut. E, East Broadway parking lot in the amount of $200 per cut. F, Haskell Boulevard Medians in the amount of $175 per cut. And G, Kendall District Medians in the amount of $150 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Next, we've got the consent agenda items, number one through 12. And moving on to our...
Make a motion that we accept our consent agenda items, as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Next, we've got the consent agenda items, number one through 12. And moving on to our...
Make a motion that we accept our consent agenda items, as presented.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. On the regular agenda, I would like to move items number 13 through 18 after our executive session so that we all understand exactly what the ramifications are one way or the other. If I could have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Motion passes. I guess, 19. Item number 19, please.
Discussion and possible approval of a revised ground lease for the Hangar Park addition of the Muskogee-Davis Regional Airport between the city of Muskogee and Ronald and Kimber Thomas, or take other necessary action.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, I do appreciate that.
I like going from number 19 to number one. You're welcome.
In front of you is a ground lease for property at the city of Muskogee-Davisville Regional Airport on which a private hangar sits. This is nothing new. This is a transaction from one previous owner to a new previous owner. Normally leases are handled within the city attorney's and city manager's office, but because this is a 20-year lease, it's going to continue well beyond most of us being here, so it was wanted to be brought in front of city council for approval. The lease rate is 25 cents per square foot with an increase based on the CPI. We did change the previous CPI, had a different region, we changed it to match the city clerk's office. That way, when we do a CPI increase across the board at the city, it's the same. It's same for your water, sewer, and now your ground lease rates, and we're going to rely upon Ms. Tammy Tracy's office to calculate that for us, and that way it's standardized across the board. I'd be happy answering any questions about this lease, but like I said, this is for a ground lease for a private hangar at the city of Muskogee Airport.
Move for approval. I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 20, please.
Consider approval to award less lawn the following. A, base bid one in the amount of $15,800 per month. B, base bid three in the amount of $7,700 per month. C, base bid four in the amount of $4,900 per month. D, health department ditch in the amount of $600 per cut. E, East Broadway parking lot in the amount of $200 per cut. F, Haskell Boulevard Medians in the amount of $175 per cut. And G, Kendall District Medians in the amount of $150 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 24, please.
Consider approval to award Muskogee Lawn and Tree the Peak Boulevard Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $2,000 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to reject these bids?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 22, please.
Consider approval to award Lawn Buster's the Turnpipe Mowing Bid in the amount of $13,000 per cut, the Peak Boulevard Right-of-Way Mowing Bid in the amount of $4,250 per cut, and the South Main Street Mowing Bid in the amount of $4,250 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes. These bids were received, these bids are in line with last year's, or last mowing cycle's price, which was bid three years ago. They have increased a little bit, but nothing to not be expected. This was the only bid, but we didn't expect very many bidders with a type of work like this. It takes quite a bit of equipment, and not many people have the equipment to do this. We did check Lawn Buster's equipment, and we've had conversations with him. We believe that this is well within his ability to do, and the prices are reasonable, and we recommend approval.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Motion passes. 23, please.
Consider approval to award Avery Lawn Care the Highway 69 Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $800 per week, and North Main Street Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $300 per week, or take other necessary action.
Yes, so we did deem Avery Lawn Care the best bid, and these prices did go down from last mowing cycle, and we are happy with the work that we've received from him on these jobs. 69 Highway Median is a job that Avery Lawn Care had last year, and it's a challenging job for a contractor with all that traffic out there on 69. And as the 69 highway renovation takes place with ODOT, it'll get more challenging. So, after conversations with the contractor and amongst ourselves, we deem them the best bid, and we recommend approval.
Why is this one per week and not per cut?
We, they go differently based off how many cycles, and it, per week, if they cut it once a week, then it would be per week, so if they don't...
Well, so the other ones don't cut once a week, they cut...
They all cut differently. They're in the backgrounds on there, and I'll be happy to tell you after the meeting.
So, if it's a dry summer, they get off easy, and if it's a rainy spring, they work harder?
Basically, we only pay them per cut, though, and, yeah, so per week, per cut, they have to cut that week, so it's a little bit of a misnomer in there, but if...
But in August, you don't cut them, call them off?
No, no, and if we get to a point where we do have a lot of growth way into like November past our cycle, we'll do it in-house.
Okay.
So, that way we stay within our budget.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number 24, please.
Consider approval to award Muskogee Lawn and Tree the Peak Boulevard Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $2,000 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to reject these bids?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Number 25, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid to Tonto Construction in an amount not to exceed $106,240 for biosolage removal and disposal from the wastewater treatment plant, or take other necessary action.
Mayor and council, this is something that we do annually at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's to remove the sludge material from the plant, and we land apply it to the city-owned landfill, which is an ODEQ-approved site to apply. Now, Tonto Construction has done this work for many years. There were five bids. Tonto was the low one. I will point out, there was a scribner's error in his unit cost. His total, the 106,240, is correct, but there was a scribner's error in his unit cost. He put on the tab sheet 0.664 per unit, and he misplaced that decimal point. It is actually .0664. He did submit a letter that stated that he understood the scribner's error. That way, if there's any billing that has to happen along this project, it will be bid at the proper unit cost. So, I do recommend approval. Tonto, again, has done this many, many times, and is very trusted in this area.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Motion passes. 23, please.
Consider approval to award Avery Lawn Care the Highway 69 Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $800 per week, and North Main Street Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $300 per week, or take other necessary action.
Yes, so we did deem Avery Lawn Care the best bid, and these prices did go down from last mowing cycle, and we are happy with the work that we've received from him on these jobs. 69 Highway Median is a job that Avery Lawn Care had last year, and it's a challenging job for a contractor with all that traffic out there on 69. And as the 69 highway renovation takes place with ODOT, it'll get more challenging. So, after conversations with the contractor and amongst ourselves, we deem them the best bid, and we recommend approval.
Why is this one per week and not per cut?
We, they go differently based off how many cycles, and it, per week, if they cut it once a week, then it would be per week, so if they don't...
Well, so the other ones don't cut once a week, they cut...
They all cut differently. They're in the backgrounds on there, and I'll be happy to tell you after the meeting.
So, if it's a dry summer, they get off easy, and if it's a rainy spring, they work harder?
Basically, we only pay them per cut, though, and, yeah, so per week, per cut, they have to cut that week, so it's a little bit of a misnomer in there, but if...
But in August, you don't cut them, call them off?
No, no, and if we get to a point where we do have a lot of growth way into like November past our cycle, we'll do it in-house.
Okay.
So, that way we stay within our budget.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Number 24, please.
Consider approval to award Muskogee Lawn and Tree the Peak Boulevard Medians Mowing Bid in the amount of $2,000 per cut, or take other necessary action.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to reject these bids?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Item passes. Number 25, please.
Consider approval of the lowest and best bid to Tonto Construction in an amount not to exceed $106,240 for biosolage removal and disposal from the wastewater treatment plant, or take other necessary action.
Mayor and council, this is something that we do annually at the wastewater treatment plant, and that's to remove the sludge material from the plant, and we land apply it to the city-owned landfill, which is an ODEQ-approved site to apply. Now, Tonto Construction has done this work for many years. There were five bids. Tonto was the low one. I will point out, there was a scribner's error in his unit cost. His total, the 106,240, is correct, but there was a scribner's error in his unit cost. He put on the tab sheet 0.664 per unit, and he misplaced that decimal point. It is actually .0664. He did submit a letter that stated that he understood the scribner's error. That way, if there's any billing that has to happen along this project, it will be bid at the proper unit cost. So, I do recommend approval. Tonto, again, has done this many, many times, and is very trusted in this area.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
They used to be our allies when we fought them in World War II against Japan. But today is totally different, and I think the climate of our country is different. I think it's good that we are bringing a lot of our businesses back to the United States because our American people have been without jobs for a long time. And to have these businesses come in and not to really have the transparency of the City Council to let us know what is going on. I just feel that we need more transparency with the City Council because when I heard about this, like I said, I got a real uneasy feeling about it. Even though I grew up with my dad talking about China, they were our allies. He was an air traffic controller in China. And he had a Chinese nurse take care of him when they bombed the air traffic control tower, and he fell handcaked down on his back. And he just thought that, you know, the Chinese people were just great. So we must remember our history and not do business with people that we are unsure of, and like I said, I am unsure of. This is for the safety of our city, and I believe that we need to reconsider this annexation. And that's all I have to say about it.
Mr. Mark Hughes. And I think you were going to talk about Utilicor.
In March 28, 2022 session, the City Council approved the contractor's prequalification application for Utilicor Municipal Services, half-owned by Mr. Cole Shive and half-owned by his stepfather Ronnie Boswell. And in that application, he said he was bonded for up to $2 million. But the Construction Industry Board, which I called just last week, says they have absolutely no record of anybody by the name of Utilicor or Cole Shive, which means he is not bonded, he's not licensed, he's not insured. So I'm assuming that if he gets sued, the city's going to have to pay for it because he doesn't have the insurance, and he's not bonded, and he's not licensed. The other problem is that according to the Secretary of State records, Cole Shive's company is not registered under his name at the Secretary of State level as being registered. Somebody else took advantage of that and registered Utilicor under their name. So I guess now the question is, when Mr. Shive does work for the city and gets paid, who gets the money? Mr. Shive or the gentleman that's registered with the Secretary of State? Now that the City Council is aware that Mr. Shive's company is not registered, not licensed, not bonded, is not registered with the Secretary of State, it's incumbent upon you all that if this, if a contract comes up for another council approval, that you all make sure that he is licensed, bonded, and insured. So now, I hate to say this, but now the onus is on you guys to make sure that it's done right next time. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Hughes, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay. We will need a motion to go into executive session. Item number 26.
Consider an executive session to discuss the following. A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to a proposed economic development project located in the John T. Griffin Industrial Park, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city of Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. B pursuant to Section 307(b)(2) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 95, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C pursuant to Section 307(b)(4) Title 25 Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim number 10-23-20, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Thank you both.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale, Dan Hall, Melody Cranford, CB Abel, Shirley Hilton Flannery, Jamie Stout, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Okay, everybody, if you would, everybody exit the chambers except those involved in our executive session. I have requested some folks come that are a part of this agreement we're working on. Last week or two weeks ago, I was able to have the opportunity to get a few council members in my office to visit about this and had promised the rest of the council I would bring in those folks so that they could ask questions to. We have our city attorney and our hired attorney. We've got attorneys that put this together on behalf. Okay, we're going to return to regular session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kael, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Jamie Stout, Shirley Hilton Flannery, CB Abel, Melody Cranford, Dan Hall, Tom Martindale.
Okay, now we'll go to the regular agenda item. Item number 13, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4248A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, establishing a zoning classification and annexing territory adjacent to the city limits upon the petition of the owner of said territory located in the northwest section 15, Township 14 North, Range 18 East, of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, State of Oklahoma, and a portion of the John T. Griffin Industrial Park, directing notification, providing for repealer severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Mayor, members of the council, Ms. Winkle is here to kind of guide this discussion. Do we have a map? So we're going to be talking about annexing three areas tonight. And Sarah, you want to take the mic? Right, I continue to go.
No, that's fine. So the first one that we're talking about annex, we are just talking about the annex right now, not the rezone? Okay. So the first one that we're talking about annexing on the map, you can see the different, the three areas that are bounded by West 43rd, West 53rd, the railroad, and then the other properties just to the east of it. Those are, excuse me while I get back to this. Those are being annexed into the portion of the John T. Griffin Industrial Park section, and the city, Fuel, and Ferdinand are the owners of those three properties. And I can answer any questions that you guys might have on the annexation.
I want to, this gentleman here with the hat on, I was made aware that he has some property that's across the street or in that area, and he's wanting to make sure. I know he probably didn't sign up to speak, but I'm.
He did.
He did sign to speak?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this, sorry.
Yes, sir.
Two hats. I couldn't see your hat, I'm sorry.
Mr. Crawford, would you like to come up?
Hang on there.
I'm not sure if Derek's talking about someone.
No, I'm trying to find out which gentleman in the black hat has property.
Well, this, I'm the one that has the property.
Yeah, this is the one I'm in reference to. I just want to make sure that his area, to find out if his area is included in whether we're annexing, and if so, how it would affect him.
Right, I'm on the northeast corner of 53rd and 24th. I don't know exactly where that is on that map right there. Can you go?
Before you make a motion, you've got to allow Mr. Crawford to speak. So we'll have to make a motion to declare emergency.
Thank you, we can vote now. I'm ready. Sorry for the interruption, Mr. Mayor.
No.
Sorry for the confusion, Derek.
All right.
So we need to do this.
Mr. Crawford, did you want to speak to item 13?
Yes, I'm against the annexation. I have 10 acres in the southwest, southwest of Section 10, Township 14 North, Range 14 East, and I oppose the annexation. I have a lot of bees, honeybees, and I do not want light industrial use near my very lucrative, very expensive beehive sites. And I don't want it to be rezoned from residential to light industrial. Also, I don't want to be annexed into the city, and would like to make that note.
Mr. Crawford, can you point on the map on the screen to where your property is?
Yes, southwest, southwest of 10, 10 acres.
The cross on the north side of 43rd?
This is Polaris, this is Ogeny's. I'm 10 acres right here.
Across the street.
So outside of the red.
You're not going to be annexed.
So that piece is not being annexed in.
Right, but it's adjacent to, and you'd be putting industrial equipment on where my bees belong.
I think maybe she spoke to the part, you said you didn't want to be annexed. That was that part. There's, I understand the separate part about the bee.
Right.
But you said you didn't want to be annexed, and you're not. But I understand you also have a concern with bees.
I have both, a concern with both, yes.
Correct, but you're not being annexed at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
But I am addressing annexing because I am a known.
I get to answer that, yeah, I understand.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll call you on the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, the next item. Do I have a motion on the first part of this?
So moved.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale, Dan Hall, Melody Cranford, CB Abel, Shirley Hilton Flannery, Jamie Stout, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes, item passes. Now I need to entertain a motion on declaring an emergency.
Declare emergency, make a motion.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale, Dan Hall, Melody Cranford, CB Abel, Shirley Hilton Flannery, Jamie Stout, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Mayor Patrick Kael.
Item passes. Number 14, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4249A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, establishing a zoning classification and annexing territory adjacent to the city limits upon the petition of the owner of said territory located in the northwest section 15, Township 14 North, Range 18 East, and northeast section 16, Township 14 North, Range 18 East, of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and a portion of the John T. Griffin Industrial Park, directing notification, providing for repealer severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the City Council, and Ms. Winkle's here, and it's the same kind of issue. Sarah, can you show us on the map where this particular piece of property is?
It's going to be at the top, and right here is where this Friday LLC technology property is going to be.
On the top red?
Yes.
The close to, the one that's buttoned up to Ogeny and Core Scientific?
Kind of goes around Ogeny.
Correct.
So, and as he was saying, same thing, proper notice was given for the public hearing, and then the public hearing was held February 10, 2025, before City Council had that one.
Are you ready for a motion?
No, I'm ready to invite our guests. We have a Mr. Crawford on this item 14, and we have Michael Gregg on this item. We'll have Mr. Crawford come first.
Of course, same objection. I still own the, or still have a significant piece of land that is offsetting the property in the southwest, southwest of Section 10, Township 14 North, Range 18 East. Under the Oklahoma Apary Act, signed into law by Governor Stitt, specifically Oklahoma statute 63 subsection 1-1331, signed Governor Stitt, 2024. No county, municipal corporation, consolidated government, or political subdivision of this state shall adopt or continue and effect any ordinance, rule, regulation, or resolution prohibiting, impeding, or restricting honey sales or distribution in compliance with this law. This annexation would severely hinder my distribution ability, my ability to take care and maintain my bees, my ability to use the roads in a normal manner and not have to compete with industrial traffic. We can already see that the traffic flow on Smith Ferry Road has nearly doubled since Polaris has begun operations. I expect that to only get worse as we get Core Scientific and Polaris expands further, and then we have more power plant expansion and power consumption. I do have a concern with brownouts and power usage on my land, and wanted to express my concern, my neighbors' concerns. And I also know that nobody was given any written notice of this annexation. Nobody was given any written notice of this zoning change, none of myself or any of my neighbors. So I don't know what you guys construe active or proper notice, but something that's published on a Friday on the agenda, it is my opinion that that is not active and proper notice. It should be delivered to door-to-door. I don't know what, I know what the city ordinances are, but it should be delivered to the record title holder of interest, and that did not happen. Absolutely did not happen. And I'd love to see where it was actually published in the newspaper, or published in the Muskogee Phoenix, or the prevailing Daily Oklahoman, or anything like that for any significant period of time. I will consistently argue that this was not probably properly noticed, and that myself and my neighbors have received no proper notice, and will be taking every action, if you guys vote for this, to appeal it any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Craig? Craig?
Michael Gregg, 4131 South Rob in Muskogee. I think you know me. Mine is really just a question of information for myself, a resolution 3024. Looking at all of this that's on the board, and looking back somewhere, I see, as I go through the different information that's been on this document for this time and others, we have reference to the project and the project on a Project Heart, which is Stardust. We have Project Structure, which is also another thing, and we have, collectively speaking, the project. So I'm assuming this is the project. Is that correct? I'd say for anybody to answer.
I'm sorry, Ms. Gregg, I.
In the documentation that's listed here, that's on your website, I've looked at, we've got, it's kind of confusing, we have the project plan, we have project plan, and we have project. We also have something called Project Heart, which we know is the lithium plant. We have Project Structure, which I'm not for sure which one that's for, and then the state and other prospect tenants collectively speaking as the project. I'm assuming in your documentation, this is the project. That's my question.
So generally, yes, the red shaded area is the project. And that little corner of.
And I know about Core Scientific, and I know about the others coming and so forth, but I just want to be sure, because I'm reading it, and the reason I say that is because if you go back, and I don't know my exact date on this, but when they were looking at this initially, not the present mayor, but the past mayor, stated that in the Project Heart, which is part of this project, so it should be addressed, it stated that in your documentation, not mine, 850 to 1,000 jobs are going to be done and out of the Project Heart, which is Stardust. We know that's not fact. That is a great distortion of the information. We have sat down, as Patrick has and others have sat down with Stardust, I personally with a group have sat down with them about the same question at least 10 times, and the maximum that they suggest will work through Phase 1, Phase 2 is 100 to 100 each time, maybe a few more. But where did this body get 850 to 1,000 jobs on Project Heart, which is Stardust? I mean, you voted on it. Not all of you, okay?
Thank you.
And before you, Mayor. But my point is, when facts are distorted to gain collective approval from the public is not a wise thing to do. Now, I hear a lot about transparency, I see little activity, and this is a gross negligence of anybody putting this information out. And you can find this like I found it. And we know what Stardust said, you've been to the meeting, Patrick, several have done, you all know that. Why would anybody put an 850,000 for Stardust when that was never, I'm assuming, ever discussed with them?
I tell you what, thank you for that. I will try to find out where that number might have come from.
You might check with the past mayor, Mr. Coleman.
And I was getting ready to say that next, I'll visit with Mr. Coleman.
Because his name's undocumented. And that's my only concern is.
I'll just try to get you an answer.
We just want to be sure that the public knows what's going on, and I do not believe at this time that that's happening, maybe to the past elevated to you guys, but unfortunately, you're sitting in the chairs at this moment. But please watch what you do. You're held responsible to the citizens. This is not a money bag for anybody else, it's their tax dollars. You've heard me say this before. You owe your allegiance to the citizens of Muskogee, not to any entities besides people you know or anything else. So we'll be watching.
Thank you, Mike.
And thank you for your time, Mayor and council members.
Thank you, sir.
I want to take everything else, just for mine.
Do I have a motion on 14?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale, Dan Hall, Melody Cranford, CB Abel, Shirley Hilton Flannery, Jamie Stout, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes. Could I have a motion, please, on declaring an emergency?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second on that. Roll call.
Tom Martindale, Dan Hall, Melody Cranford, CB Abel, Shirley Hilton Flannery, Jamie Stout, Deputy Mayor Derek Reed, Mayor Patrick Kael.
Yes, item passes. Number 15, please.
Consider approval of ordinance number 4250A, an ordinance of the city of Muskogee, Oklahoma, establishing a zoning classification and annexing territory adjacent to the city limits upon the petition of the owner of said territory located in section 16, Township 14 North, Range 18 East, of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, Oklahoma, and a portion of the John T. Griffin Industrial Park, directing notification, providing for repealer severability, and declaring an emergency, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Coleman.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the final piece of this particular project. Ms. Winkle, do you want to show us and discuss?
So this is going to be the bottom red portion that abuts the Polaris on the bottom of the screen. It's the triangle on the very bottom, right there. Same thing, there was, public notice was given. The public hearing was held February 10, 2025, before City Council on this as well. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
We've got, I think, two more people to speak on this item. Mr. Crawford, speaking to item 15?
Yes.
Good to see you again, it's been a while.
Same objections, no notice given. I asked Ms. Winkle, where was notice, where is my notice? Where was I mailed anything? Where was, where was notice posted?
So I can tell you that this actually was published in the paper three different times, on three separate occasions, and I have those dates in my office.
And otherwise, we can come up and talk to the manager or something, but staff doesn't need to address questions.
Okay.
Not tonight.
Nothing was sent to anyone's individual house address, so the few, few and far between people that actually have a subscription to the most, Muskogee Phoenix must not be the people that live around this area, or else they would be here tonight. I do have some concerns, and several of you, I actually emailed directly to, when this was brought up, I believe on February the 10th, there was some questions from Mr. Reed and Mrs. Cranford about some of the issues that were considering the record title for some of these properties. Some of these properties have been sold, one, two, four, five, six times in the last 90 days. I find that to be odd. I am a petroleum land man. I work with record title for a living. I have never seen properties transferred in this manner. On 10/6/2023, at book 4766, page 62, for a sale price of $1,897,500, the Muskogee City County Port Authority sold the property at issue to YZY Capital Holdings LLC. And YZY then made some sort of sale of the same property, transfer on 12/21/23, for a total taxable assessed value of $0, less than approximately two months and two weeks into the future. So the first sale was on 10/6 for a little over $1,008,000, and then on 12/21, zero. Again, on 2/8/2024, sale from the Muskogee City County Port Authority, sale price $0, no tax stamps paid. Again, on the exact same day, another transfer, same property, along with a multi-track sale, which it would include multiple properties, $0, according to Ron Dean's office. And then later on, on less than a month later, on March 4, 2024, at book 4892. And then later on, on less than a month later, on March 4th, 2024, a book 4892, page 601, for a sale price of a whopping $4,226,500, the same exact property was sold by the Muskogee City County Port Authority to Ferdinand Technologies LLC, care of Headwater Site Development LLC. So I ask you, ladies and gentlemen, how does one property within less than six months rise in value by 224%? That is absolute insanity, and I would love to meet the people that are behind that rise and that price and why there are so many transfers. Anyone that is worth their stand as a title attorney would sit there and call this junk and demand this, a title review by a professional title company. I hereby request the same. And I have noticed several of you individually that the title in here is inherently possibly flawed. It might seriously be flawed, and you guys might be voting on something that is negligent at best, as far as the record title is concerned. Just please pay attention to that and remember that. Thanks.
Mr. Crawford, thank you. Mr. Gregg, again.
Thank you, but I think I got my answers. I'm waiting for the answer in the other question. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Could I entertain a motion on number 15?
Can I say something really quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Because you called my name specifically. Are you speaking of the email that you sent this afternoon?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, so I was at work, and I just left work and came here. So it's not that I negated to answer you. You sent that during my work hours. And so I will get back to you with the information that you're requesting, but I don't want it to appear that I was negligent to a constituent. So that was an email that you sent this afternoon, not a month.
But we get the same thing on Friday, and we don't have time to process this before the courthouse is closed.
Well, I just wanted to address the fact that you said you reached out to me and I didn't respond to you. Your reaching out was this afternoon to both of us, and you gave dates that listed six months of dates, and I didn't want it to appear that I negated to speak to you for six months. Your email was this afternoon, and I will get back to you. Thank you.
Motion?
I make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Could I entertain a motion on declaring an emergency, please?
So moved.
Motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
I need to read it first.
Item number 16.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4257A, rezoning a parcel of land from R1, single-family residential, to I1, light industrial, for a property located in section 16, township 14 north, range 18 east of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, state of Oklahoma, generally located at West 53rd Street South, providing for repealer, severability, and if approved, authorized staff to revise the official zoning map or take other necessary action.
Thank you. We will now open the public meeting. Number 16. No, we're ready.
Sarah.
Sarah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
So the applicant requested rezone of the property that is located at West 53rd Street South. The current zoning and use of this property was R1, single-family residential. They're requesting rezone to I1, light industrial. And again, it is the top left portion that you see on the map in the red up there. The planning commission heard this at a special call on February the 19th and did recommend approval of the rezone to city council. And I can answer any questions that you may have. Our staff recommendation is also to recommend approval of the ordinance.
Is it that little yellow, what's in the yellow?
No, so it is the top left red section.
Mr. Crawford, did you want to speak to item number 16?
Same objection. I own interest in the southwest southwest of section 10, township 14 north, range 18 east, same piece of property, 10 acres to, you can see it right on the map here, but here's the actual property circled at the existing city boundary. This agenda item was incorrectly, in my opinion.
If you could wait to the mic, because they can't pick you up if you're not speaking into the mic.
Oh.
Thank you. Yep. We want the audience to be able to hear you.
Thank you. This item specifically says that it is adjacent property to the city limits. That is not a fact. That is not true. There is in fact a one-half mile gap in between this property and the existing city limits. So as it stands, the agenda is incorrectly written. Again, I am in objection to changing something from residential one to light industrial without asking the neighboring homeowners what they think of. And with the limited notice with this rezoning, there's going to be a lot of people that are not very happy about this. There's not going to be a lot of people that are happy about having a data mining center and lithium refinery and all these power lines right next to their homes and ranches. Cattle will be affected, livestock will be infected, affected, possibly infected. This is a very pristine piece of land. I can't emphasize enough, I don't know if anyone's actually ever been out to the site, but sections 15, 16, and 22, where this is primarily focused on here, where right now we're talking about sections 15 and 16 of township 14 north, range 18 east. It's the convergence of Sam Creek and Cootie Creek, the two largest watersheds on the eastern side of town, the two largest watersheds in the southern part of town. There is no good groundwater in this area. If any light industrial activity affects this, it will be devastatingal to the drainage area of Cootie Creek, which actually drains into a federally protected waterway, the Arkansas Kerr. And so I beg you to please consider changing residential areas that have always been residential, that have never been part of the city limits, which now are part of the city limits, and then forcing upon us not only to have heavy industrial next to us and be right next to an industrial park. Now we're basically taking farmland that was pristine land that has never had anything industrial on it, ever, ever, and is in between two major watersheds that drain into the Arkansas River. And it's our major source of water for our cattle, my bees, my chickens, my hogs, everything like that, all depend on this water. Water wells are absolutely, totally, almost worthless in this area because they just don't produce very much water. Surface water is imperative, and we have to protect it. And making this industrial is, it would just be a shame and a crisis. And any disaster or anything like that, or any sort of spillage or anything because of this on this pristine land could totally be avoided by putting this over by the port. Put it next to the asphalt plant or the fertilizer plant, or put it next to some of these other plants that have already contaminated like Fansteel. Put it on that land. Why does it have to be here? There's plenty of power, water, electric, fiber optic cable, rail, everything like that at the port. There's plenty of vacant land there. You're putting it on pristine land, and you're going to affect the rest of us for hundreds, maybe thousands of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to have to close the public hearing.
We're now going to close this meeting.
The public hearing.
This public hearing.
You need discussion.
Okay, could, we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
I need to read it.
17, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4256A, rezoning a parcel of land from R1, single-family residential, to I1, light industrial, located in the northwest section 15, township 14 north, range 18 east of the Indian Basin Meridian, and northeast section 16, township 14 north, range 18 east of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, state of Oklahoma, also known as 1801 and 2041 West Smith Ferry Road, providing for repealer, severability, and if approved, authorized staff to amend the official zoning map or take other necessary action.
Ms. Winkle?
Yes.
We now need to open this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is another request for rezone of the property that's located at West 53rd. The current zoning and use of this property is R1, single-family residential, and they are wanting to rezone this to I1, light industrial. Proper notice was given and published in the paper as well as letter sent out to the adjoining property owners. This was heard before the planning commission on February the 19th, 2025, and they did recommend approval to city council. So our staff recommendation is also approval of the ordinance for rezone.
Ms. Winkle, could you explain, first of all, how it got R1, single-family residential designation?
Yes, so anytime a property is annexed or up for annexation into the city, it automatically comes in as R1 residential. And then we have the ability to rezone it based on what the needs of that property is.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
And I have also a question for clarification. Is it the property owner who does the request or the city on the type of zoning if they want to rezone the area?
It is the property owner that requests the rezone.
Okay. And then also on this map that Mr. Crawford presented?
Yes.
And he talked about the area that was not annexed. Was that actually annexed previously to make it contiguous?
So the, let me go to the map up there, I'm sorry. It's hard to see on this, I apologize. But if you can see the yellow dotted lines that, of Core Scientific and the very top piece of this property, all of that was in a previous annexation. So that is annexed already, so it is adjacent.
Okay, so this is a, I just want to make clear for Mr. Crawford's benefit, so this is contiguous with a previously annexed area.
Yes.
Do you know when that area was annexed in?
This was done with the previous John T. Griffin annexation. I believe it was back in April, but I do not want to misquote that. I would have to look.
Okay, so it was recently annexed?
Yes.
Thank you for that. We now have a couple of folks that would like to speak tonight. Pat Cassica. Just state your name only, please.
Pat Cassica. I want to talk about Senate Bill 1092 authored by Senator Brian Guthrie on February the 20th, which unanimously passed the Senate Business and Insurance Committee. The passage of this legislation would, quote, "require all licensed commercial indoor medical marijuana growers in municipal corporate limits to submit an odor control plan when applying for or renewing their licenses." So.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cassica?
Yes.
I think you're speaking on your, for your general comment, not your agenda item.
I already spoke on my agenda item.
Is she signed up to speak on this item? She was signed up to speak on the agenda item, and then she was also on it. Yeah. So you're signed up for both on this?
I am. This one is just the general.
So we've already done the general comments? Yeah, we've already done the general.
Well.
So if you want to speak, you need to speak on this specific item.
On item number 17.
You're signed up to speak on item 17?
Well, I can't speak on that because it doesn't apply to this.
Right, so what I'm saying is, enter our ordinances. When you speak on it, when you're signed up to speak on a specific agenda item, you have to speak and address that item. You can't use, you can't do general comments on this item.
Well, I guess I was under the impression that I was going to speak on the agenda item the first time I spoke.
Yeah, the first time you spoke, you addressed, you did general comments.
Well, that's not my general comment. This is my general.
What was her agenda?
When you asked what comment you were speaking on previously, I told you it was your marijuana comment, which is what you have on your paper.
Okay, well, I had it that way the first time, and then.
You've got that as a general comment, marijuana grow, which is what we called you up for the first time.
Okay, well, then I don't have anything to address this particular topic that you're talking about, but I do want to speak on this before we go.
Okay, you've signed up to this item. You've got State Bill 997.
I already presented that.
Okay, you've got that as your agenda item, and you've got marijuana as your general comment.
Okay, well, I guess that's kind of misleading to me, so there's probably some confusion on my part, but I just want to know if I can still speak on this topic.
You can speak on this item, but you have to address just this item.
Item number 17.
Okay, I'm not going to, I don't have anything to relate to it. So after all of these other are finished, can I still speak on it?
No, ma'am, we've already done the general comments. But if you want to sign up at next council meeting for general comments again, you can do that, and then you can speak.
I don't want to sign up on another because I've already spent three hours here, and I just want to get it done.
And these rules are by ordinance?
Yeah, these are by ordinance. So the fact that you were already allowed to speak on your general comment item, and you spoke.
You know what? I'm going to say something you're not going to like, but what I was going to present on the marijuana is, you don't even follow your own ordinances on the marijuana odor control. These people are supposed to have these air ventilation systems already in.
Right.
Before they move in.
Right, and we understand and appreciate that, but again, just by ordinance, we're restricted. You can only speak on agenda item 17.
I know, but you don't even follow your ordinances. So if you follow your own ordinances, there wouldn't be all this, you know.
Right.
But citizens need to speak out about this.
So ma'am, at this time, you need to stop speaking unless you're going to speak and address directly item number 17.
You know, and I'm tired of you censoring me and trying to get me to stop talking. You know, I can't exercise my free speech, and you guys.
You can, and you're the one who signed up to speak on this item, so you need to address this item.
And I explained that to her.
Right.
Okay, and I wrote it down.
What you signed up as, so at this time, chief.
As it was told to me. You know what?
If we can have you, please escort her out.
I don't need anybody to escort me out of here. But I'll tell you what, I'm going to write to every senator, every representative, anybody that wants to make our country healthier again, because this marijuana smoke is killing people.
All right, Mr. Crawford.
I'm following your own ordinances.
Mr. Crawford, would you like to speak to item number 17?
Yes. Something I don't need to introduce myself.
No. You know who you are by now.
I imagine. Thorn in the side. Thorn in the side, fly in the ointment, bee in the honey. What's going to... This is the third and last parcel here, so I'm going to throw a Hail Mary and just say, I hope that this council does better than the council did in the 1950s when they allowed Fansteel to operate just within several hundred feet of the Arkansas River, and now that is an EPA superfund site. And this pristine land that is in the middle of town has been untouched since the Indians owned it, and I think it's absolutely horrible to take something as Residential 1 and bump it all the way up to Light Industrial. That is just absurdly monumental jump from Res 1, not even to consider like Residential 3 or Residential subclass, you know, light commercial or anything like that, to go from Residential 1, a single-family household, to Light Industrial. On all these farmers around here is a horrible, awful burden, and it is in the middle of two major watersheds that we all rely on for irrigation, for our water, for our cattle, our livestock, and our livelihood. And I hope that a lesson is learned from Fansteel, that hopefully monitoring wells are put around Cootie Creek and Sam Creek at their entrances in Section 15, 16, and I know this is not part of it, but Section 22 at Stardust, and let's try to catch this before it hits a federally protected waterway, and the city becomes immensely liable for damaging a federally protected watershed. So around the Fansteel site, there is approximately seven monitoring wells, and that site is roughly about 20% in size of this. So in order to secure this area, there would need to be somewhere in the ballpark of 20 to 25 monitoring wells tested weekly to make sure that there's no sort of industrial contamination, since it looks like we're going to go right to Light Industrial once again. And I tried to actually find out what the city ordinance actually defines what Light Industrial is, and it basically just means do whatever you want, manufacture whatever you want. Light Industrial could be everything from an oil refinery to a manure farm. So giving the designation of Light Industrial means do what you want. And I'm not as good of a speaker as some are, and I hope you guys take some lessons from the past and learn that some decisions have impacts. We are still dealing from 1957 contamination at Fansteel, and our children's children's children will still be dealing with it. And these farmers and my neighbors will still be dealing with it if there is an industrial accident here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now close this public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
Motion. I make a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. 18, please.
Hold a public hearing and consider approval of ordinance number 4255A rezoning a parcel of land from R1 Single Family Residential to I1 Light Industrial located in the northwest Section 15 Township 14 North Range 18 East of the Indian Basin Meridian, Muskogee County, State of Oklahoma, providing for repealer, severability, and if approved, authorized staff to amend the official zoning map or take other necessary action.
We will now open a public meeting. Ms. Winkle?
Yes.
Hearing.
Good evening again. This also... The applicant is requesting a rezone of the property from R1 Single Family to I1 Light Industrial, and on the map, if you look at this one, this is the red parcel on the right that abuts Core Scientific and is just north of OGNB. This one does have also the little yellow square that's in the top right-hand corner of it. This went to Special Call Planning Commission on February the 19th, and they did recommend approval of the rezone and the ordinance, and staff also recommends that approval, and I'll take any questions if you have them.
Here, I think you're getting to be a good speaker.
Thank you. Last time, I'm going to cite Oklahoma Statute 2024 Title 63-1-1331, signed into law by Governor Stitt. No county, municipal corporation, consolidated government, or political subdivision of this state shall adopt or continue in effect any ordinance, rule, regulation, or resolution prohibiting, impeding, or restricting honey sales or distribution in compliance with this law. Signed, Governor Stitt. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Crawford. We have a... We now need to close this public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
I make a motion.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Ms. Bowdenhammer, please.
Yes, sir. Agenda item 26A pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss matters pertaining to a proposed economic development project located in the John T. Griffin Industrial Park, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal for the type of business to remain or to locate within the city of Muskogee, and an appropriate motion would be to approve the economic development agreement as discussed in executive session with the proposed amendments.
So moved. Go ahead. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes.
Item number B pursuant to Section 307(b)(2), Title 25 Oklahoma Statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 95, and an appropriate motion would be to approve the MOU as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
C.B. Abel.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you, Ms. Bowdenhammer. This meeting is adjourned.